So, welcome, everybody. Just to give you one-minute warning, we'll be starting in about a minute. So if people would like to find places to sit, that'd be very good. Well, welcome, everybody. We have a full house tonight, so it looks really great. Thank you for coming. So I'd like to bring the Planning Commission of Catatti to order on May 13, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Here.
Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Chair Hancock?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
And I shall vice-chair Whipple is absent.
Okay. Could I have the last minutes? Can we -- any comments on the last minutes for February 19? Could I have a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Any second?
I have to abstain. I was not there.
Okay. I will second it. And so if we can have a roll call on approving the minutes?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Abstain.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Abstain.
So is there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No changes.
So this is the time when we ask -- have an open oral and written communications. The public is asked to please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agendized. So this is the open comment period for anything that's not already on the agenda. Do I see anybody who would like to make a -- yes? If you'd like to step up?
I'm Lori Alderman. I live on Maple Avenue here in Catatti. I'm the -- I wrote this thinking you'd be able after. Anyway, I'm sure the narrative here is all positive about the hotel by your city staff, as the city budget is dependent on the hotel going in with sewer connection fees, building fees, and impact fees, et cetera. Also, this public input doesn't really matter to the city. The hotel is going to approve -- be approved no matter what we say and submit at this public hearing. The planning commission here for years approves all resolutions unanimously despite what the public says, following the city staff's recommendations to a T. So does the city council. This hotel is a done deal. Some of the facts and issues that will be ignored. This is a four-story hotel. The Rancho Adobe Fire District does not have a ladder truck to fight a fire for a four-story hotel. The city could approve the hotel, but the Fire District might not sign off on it because of the fire issues. Last year, a Fire District official came to a city council meeting and stated that the district would be happy to accept the million-plus for the purchase of a ladder truck. They gave their card to the hotel developer. Not a word has been spoken to the Fire District about this since by the hotel developer, Ken Molinaro, or by the city. There is another fire issue. The plans include a concrete wall and trees on the side bordering Grabenstein Highway. This will also impede the ability to fight a fire from the street if needed. This hotel is proposed on city-owned land. It was gifted to the city as surplus property by Caltrans. The city will receive 2.3 million from the hotel developer. In exchange, the city has to fund park-and-ride spaces up in Santa Rosa. The county and the city both financially benefit from this sale. The city wants the money from the 2.3 million gift, and the county wants the money out of that 2.3 million for the park-and-ride spaces from this hotel deal. The narrative on this hotel building local is not true. Ken Molinaro was a hotel developer for over 20 years in Porte Beata. Google him. His family stayed here, but he does business mostly elsewhere. The five-point --
Could I ask you to wrap up in 20 seconds?
Yeah, one more sentence. One more. The $5 million recent P1 project mostly benefited the hotel. The prior sewer capacity at the hotel site was about 4 gallons per minute. A hotel needs something like 50 gallons a minute, which is now available because of the P1 sewer project. That's approximately $700 per resident that's been paid for a sewer project that benefits the hotel, and the hotel developer hasn't paid a cent towards the sewer project that benefits his hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask for comments that are not on the hotel project. We do have projects coming -- the project period coming up. So is there anybody else who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay. I will close the portion of public comment. So now we're going to matters at hand. And since we have a large group here, I'd just like to say that we're all volunteers here on the commission, so we're hearing this for, you know, as part of the Catatti Planning Commission. We'll go through a process here where, first of all, we'll hear the staff report, and then after the staff report, we'll have some questions from the planning commission to the staff, and we'll ask anything that's not clear. Then I will open it up for public comment, and that'll be the time to comment on the hotel project. We'll limit it to three minutes per person because we have so many people who would like to potentially make a comment. We do have speaker cards, and if you would like to get in on the beginning, if you could fill in one of these speaker cards and hand them in, and that will facilitate being able to work the process. It's not guaranteed. You don't have to fill it in, but we'd appreciate it. And then finally, there will be a planning commission discussion, in which case we'll proceed with the -- any comments and directions to staff. So I'd like to open this up and ask for staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Hancock. For the record, my name's John Paul Harris. I'm a senior planner with the City of Catatti. And I'd like to add one thing. After I give my presentation, the applicant will also provide a PowerPoint presentation, at which point it would be good to ask questions and then go to public comment.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. So what we're talking about tonight is the Catatti Hotel and Market Hall. Tonight, we're going to be taking -- making decisions on several items. One is approval of the initial study mitigated negative declaration. This is a SEQA document. Next, we'll also be talking about approval of design review. As part of design review, we'll be looking at variances for building height and block length. And as part of the hotel, we'll be looking at use permits for -- lodging requires a use permit, outdoor dining on private property. This would be in the pedestrian plaza that you're going to hear about. And then whenever this is -- whenever you -- within the City of Catatti, whenever you have alcohol sales with entertainment, we define it as a nightclub. It's an old term. It doesn't mean there's like a disco nightclub, something thing there. That's just the way it's defined, and I want to be clear about that. It's just whenever entertainment with alcohol sales. Yeah. Even the Redwood Cafe would be nightclub. So just so people understand that. With this application, there's no subdivision of land. There's no zoning or general plan amendments that are being proposed. Therefore, the Catatti Municipal Code establishes the planning commission as the review authority for these matters. So just a little background. The downtown specific plan was adopted in 2009. As part of that plan, there were economic studies to inform the plan, and that plan explicitly calls for a hotel in this northern gateway area. The general plan was adopted in 2015, and it also reiterates the goals of the downtown specific plan, or what we call the DSP for short. In August 2015, the city acquired the park-and-ride lot from Caltrans for the purposes of redeveloping the property for revenue enhancement, ideally a hotel. In summer of 2017, the city sent out a request for proposals for development of that site with lodging, and we received two proposals back. One was a Holiday Inn Express, and the other was the Hard Rock Reverb concept submitted by Catatti Hotel LLC. That is the application that's before you tonight, and compared to the Holiday Inn Express was far superior in pretty much all that it offered for the city. After that, the city -- excuse me, the city council approved a purchase agreement between the city and the developer for them to develop the hotel, and that was executed by the developer in February 2018. And then I want to say, in July of 2018, we had a public workshop, which was well-attended, and the applicant had an opportunity to present the workshop, and we received comments. And many of the comments related to traffic and hotel size, as well as recycling, some concern about too much parking. And I think we've addressed all that. Okay. So the plans for this application are on page 119 through 140 of your packet. Those are the plans. There are renderings, which are photo simulations of what the hotel would look like, and those began on page 29 and then on 37. So the application is for a new hotel to be located at 147 St. Joseph Way. The hotel would have 153 rooms. It would be a four-story hotel, approximately 53 feet in height, and comprising of about 77,400 square feet. The first floor has small conference rooms, a radio room, fitness room, pool, kitchen and lounge. A separate building is the 7,250-square-foot Market Hall. That hall has room for a restaurant, retail, another lounge, and can provide entertainment in that area as well. Between the Market Hall and the new hotel, there is a pedestrian plaza that's proposed that has space and amenities for dining, events, and entertainment. The full site, parking lot, and all the site is landscaped, and we'll look at that, and includes a water tower feature. The project provides parking for 167 vehicles. I should say that there's 166 parking spaces out there right now that associated with the park-and-ride. It will replace 30 of those park-and-ride spaces, and the parking is landscaped with shade trees and screening shrubs to prevent visibility from the roadways and public ways, and is implemented with water-quality BMPs throughout. Also, the project involves reconstruction of St. Joseph's Way to conform to city design standards. It would include sidewalks and street scaping on the hotel side of the street. It will include parking for 16 vehicles, and though it's not really part of St. Joseph's Way, it will appear, but at the terminus, the western terminus of St. Joseph's Way, there's a wetland water quality interpretive area that's being proposed. As well, there is some traffic improvements on Old Redwood Highway. Part of when we reconstruct St. Joseph's Way, or as proposed, there'll be a turn median at the -- where it meets with Old Redwood Highway, which would allow left and right turns in, but right turns out only. So only southbound travel onto Old Redwood Highway. To allow for some northbound traffic to be able to go north, we're including a -- we're asking to include a U-turn, and this would be at the location where there's proposed to be a traffic signal, and I'll show you more of that as we move on. So that's where the project is located, pretty much the southeastern -- excuse me, southwestern corner of Grabenstein Highway and Old Redwood Highway. And this is a south -- a view looking south, but you -- it also shows the parking lot that exists and kind of the heavily compacted area off to the left in this aerial. Today, the exist -- in this image, basically, what you could see is there's two major lots, and there's a tiny third lot, a small rectangle. It's about 450, 500 square feet in size. The majority is covered in asphalt with the park-and-ride lot, and then the far-right side is where it's all denuded gravel. That's an old site. Used to be a gas station, and Tubby's Restaurant was there. Since then, all those tanks have been removed, and remediation has occurred, and the site's been cleared. But currently, it's vacant. It's been used for a Christmas tree lot for the last few years. And this is the site layout as proposed. So I think that the key things to see here are how the hotel will face onto St. Joseph's Between the hotel, you can see the plaza, and then you have the Market Hall on the right that's kind of behind the pedestrian plaza that the city constructed, but up close to the roadway there. That's a two-story Market Hall. That small circle you see just above the Market Hall is the proposed -- the location of the proposed water tower. The plaza is enclosed and has gated entrance at the north and one at the south. I think you can also see the way the parking layout is designed. It's designed to allow emergency access vehicles to move through it so that they can get to all areas of the building, and it includes bioretention facilities to capture stormwater runoff from the building and the parking lots. This is a rendering submitted by the applicant, and I think basically what I'm trying to show here is how it would appear as if, when you're on St. Joseph's Way, it has active ground floor uses in the hotel, and the Market Hall also has active uses such as restaurants and retail. This is precisely what's called for in the DSP, and the pedestrian plaza is also an important component of what the DSP is looking for, and that's pedestrian-oriented hotel development. When you look at the hotel in this part, you can see some of the architecture. It uses -- it's flat-roofed, uses off-site planes, a series of colors, and decorative windows, and all these things help to break up and the massing of the building. The barn-like structures are distinctly different, but complement, I think, the building because of the historical features that are utilized in the hotel itself. Also, I want to point out that the cornice of the hotel is done in a way that, I guess, is reminiscent of turn-of-the-century commercial buildings and provides an attractive top to Access, by the way, to all of the Market Hall is from within the plaza. There's -- that's the way you will access those buildings. As well, from the plaza, you can access the hotel. So the downtown specific plan was adopted in 2009. The plan is to remodel and re-energize existing space of the downtown and create a new space. Primary purpose is for reinvestment in the properties and regeneration of the properties. The goal -- one of the goals is generating a healthy, sustainable mix of uses around Catatti's historic core. And on packet pages 12 through 20, I list a series of policies and objectives that this project conforms with or implements. Within the downtown specific plan, there's four planning areas. There's a historic core down to the south. There's La Plaza. This is around La Plaza Park. Commerce Avenue, which is all the way to the north of this site, and then the northern gateway, which is this particular site, which this site is within. Each of the different areas or districts have different goals and development standards. And this one is located in the northern gateway. The focus, according to the DSP, is for regeneration. As I said, this once was used site, so it's to reutilize the site, and for revenue generation. It quotes this. DSP is saying, "This area of the plan presents the largest continuous opportunity for a substantial revenue stream. It transforms underutilized land into mixed-use district." Two primary goals are to reconfigure Old Redwood Highway into a vibrant, mixed-use, multimodal, and beautiful urban street, and lodging, again, is specifically called for in this district. Develop pedestrian-oriented hotel with active ground floor uses, capture sales and hotel taxes. Some of the key development standards is the maximum height, which allows four stories and has a 50-foot limit. Part of this proposal tonight, we're going to be looking -- talking about variances or considering variances. There's two variances that this project would require. One is to the block length, and we'll look at that in a moment. But the DSP establishes a maximum block length of 500 feet. As proposed, the block length, the way it's calculated, is 570 feet. And in this case, a mid-block road connection -- let me just go to this next slide. But in this case, this mid-rock road connection is not something we want. If you look at this site plan, there's no way to run a road to connect to the 101 off-ramp, excuse me, or to Grabenstein Highway. Neither of those connections would conform to Caltrans roadway standards, nor would we want to run a road through this development. To do so would significantly diminish kind of the good assets of this project, including the plaza and the Market Hall and the flow, the pedestrian flow that it creates. That said, the pedestrian plaza does actually create a connection between Grabenstein Highway and St. Joseph's Way, so the block is interrupted by a pedestrian way, which is, I think, just as valuable as interrupting the block with a road. The other variance that we're going to discuss is the height, building height. The downtown specific plan allows for 50 feet in this district. It is the tallest district within the specific plan. Other areas of the plan limit height to 35 feet. This allows up to four stories. As proposed, the roof of the hotel is at 50.5 feet, and the parapet extending above the roof goes to 53 feet. On the roof of the -- on the roof of the structure, our elevator and stairwell access, and that extends up to 58 feet. The code allows for a three-foot addition for features on top of the building, so we're really looking at about a five-foot variance to the height to allow for the parapet, but also the elevator and stairwell access, which are important safety features. With respect to the height, in terms of could it be reduced, the first floor height is 16 feet. That's basically from the ground to the top where the second story meets it. So the ceiling height inside there is comparable to what you're seeing in here or less, and we didn't -- to reduce the first floor height would diminish part of what's called for in the specific plan, which is active ground floor uses. And you also want the first floor to be what you would expect, and normally hotel lobbies, you need a little airy space, and it's kind of what's expected in a hotel. The guest rooms themselves, floor to ceiling, measure eight to nine and a half feet. They're modular units. This is the second through fourth stories would be constructed with modular construction. The modular construction, the way they're built in units, each of them measure 11 and a half feet. If we try to reduce the size of that height, then we start running into guest room heights that are below eight feet. And then with respect to the elevator and stairwell access, seven and a half feet above the roof is really the minimum that we can do and have it still function. It has to have full-size doors. And so with some of these images, and you're going to see them again in the applicant's presentation, but when we look at the height, I think it's important to look at how the development was constructed, and this is taken, well, looks like just right across the street from St. Joseph's Way. And the idea is that the two-story structures in the front help to step up the development so that we don't have a four-story development right on the curb like that. It attenuates the height, and you can see that here as well. This is from where you're the Chevron Station, looking kitty-corner. And again, we have the two-story structure, commercial structures measuring about 32 feet in height. The water tower, which provides a vertical element, all of it attenuating the mass and the height of the hotel, as well as the landscaping. And this is an image of or rendering of what it would look like when you're standing over at the crossroads center, kind of opposite of the off-ramp. And again, it's because it's set back a little ways, the height is attenuated through landscaping, and it includes the vertical elements of the water tower and the Market Hall. With respect to traffic, I think it's important to look at the long-term future of what this is supposed to look like. So you have the site up there, a little bit about 330 feet approximately, south of St. Joseph's Way. Will be located a signal. That signal will be located at an area where a future road will come in to serve those underdeveloped properties that are south of the property. So I want to say this about the property. The property, again, has -- currently has 166 parking spaces and a one-acre vacant commercial lot. It already has the ability to -- I mean, it's already been entitled, really, to build much more than what's being proposed. If we were to replace it with a gas station, but that was there again, I mean, previously, it would be generating a lot more traffic than what we're considering here. In terms of uses that would be appropriate for this area, a hotel is really the most desirable use we can think of to go there. It generates less traffic, far less traffic than all the other commercial uses that we considered -- we could consider there, and less traffic than, say, mixed-use development with homes. Not only that, this is a poor location for mixed-use development because of its proximity to all the heavy roadways. So when the properties to the south are developed, the road -- the traffic from the hotel will also be diverted through roadways down to where this future signal will be. The U-turn pocket that is proposed is proposed The U-turn pocket that is proposed is proposed where this future signal will be. So the developer will be installing a component of the future intersection by widening the road and putting in the, some of the street marking. The traffic study that we looked at, looked at six major intersections. The on-and-off ramps at 101, St. Joseph's Way intersection with Old Redwood Highway, the intersection of Gravenstein Highway and Old Redwood Highway, the location of where the future road will be, as well as the stop, four-way stop intersection at William and St. George. Um, excuse me, excuse me, William and George Street. The traffic was a conservative approach to it. They actually considered the market hall as a supermarket, and it studied peak hour, AM and PM delays at all the study intersections. And what we found is all the intersections operated at acceptable levels of service with the project. William-George currently fails, but the existing peak hour delay will not exceed the significance threshold with the project. That is another location that is ultimately proposed for a signal. And when that signal goes in, that will help that intersection. The right-in, right-turn-out, it prohibits left turns onto, from St. Joseph's Way. And then we have the U-turn pocket at Old Redwood Highway. This allows for southbound traffic to make the northbound turn. It hopefully prevents, you know, cars from coming down into town that want to go north just trying to find a way back north or turning around in someone else's driveway, for example. As we stated before, there's going to be use permits required for this project. It requires permit for lodging, hotel, requires a use permit for outdoor dining on private property, and requires a use permit for alcohol sales with entertainment. All of the uses are permissible with a use permit. And all the uses have been addressed through the conditions of approval, which begin on page 105 of your packet. And that includes the mitigation and monitoring reporting program, which is part of the SEQA document. It also includes noise monitoring during events. It has nuisance provisions. Safety and security conditions are included. Conditions to require recycling and composting, as well as making sure that the facilities are sized appropriately. It will include a parking management plan to, and there's conditions in there that require limited permits for any events that would exceed the hours that we've conditioned or the parking capacity of the projects. As I said before, there is a SEQA document. This was a mitigated negative declaration. It is prepared in accordance with the Environmental Quality Act, which is SEQA is short for. The document was circulated for 30 days. It did identify potential impacts to the following, which were air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, which was fossils, greenhouse gas emissions, and noise. And then ultimately, that concludes that there's no impacts due to the mitigation measures. And those mitigation measures are described on page 88 through 96 of your board pack, excuse me, council pack, plan commission packet, and are part of the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. So there's two actions that we're recommending tonight. The first would be to move to adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program. The second is to move to adopt a resolution approving design review, variances, and a use permit for the hotel with the associated outdoor dining on private property and alcohol sales with entertainment located at 147 St. Joseph's Way. And with that, I think we will turn it over to the applicant. And then you want to hold questions till then so that you can direct them to both of us, I think?
Right, yes. I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and give us a presentation.
Hi, thank you. I feel kind of awkward because I have my back to 90% of the people in the room, so I apologize, but I don't think there's any way around that. My name is Ken Mullinaro. I'm the managing member of Catati Hotel LLC, and we are the applicant for the Reverb by Hard Rock Hotel. I would just take a couple of seconds to talk about my family, my family history. I'm here with my wife Alma, my two sisters, and one of my nieces tonight, along with a number of friends of the family. My parents moved to Santa Rosa in 1958 when I was four years old. I went to St. Rose Grade School, and I graduated from Cardinal Newman High School, and I spent a brief college career at Sonoma State. I started out, my father had a trucking company and a produce company. I worked for him when he retired. I got into the real estate development business, built a number of subdivisions in and around Santa Rosa. And around 1991, I had an opportunity to go to Mexico and do some building there. So I moved to Puerto Vallarta, Jalisco, where I spent about 20 years building a number of hotels and resorts down there. I was going to go for a year, and then I met my wife and stayed for 20 years. We came back to Sonoma County about seven years ago. Lived for six years in Santa Rosa, and about eight or nine months ago, we moved to Cannon Manor out in Pen Grove. I think it's important to point out that we are a local family. This is a local, a local project. It's one that I've always wanted to do. I always wanted to have a hotel. I always wanted to have a property in my hometown, and although I'm from Santa Rosa, Catati's pretty close. There's been some comments that I don't live here and that I live in Mexico. I lived in Mexico. I live in Pen Grove. I was grazed in Santa Rosa. We're pretty much a local family. We take a great pride in being here and trying to produce this project. I'd like to point out that this project, we're hoping, will be called Reverb by Hard Rock. And what that means is, is that we've been in discussions with the Hard Rock Hotel Company out of Hollywood, Florida, for a couple of years now. And to build a hotel and operate it successfully these days, it's really hard to do it as an independent. You really need to have a brand name on your hotel. They have obviously huge marketing reach that we could never accomplish on our own, and they have a huge reservation center that we could never possibly hope to staff on our own. Reverb is not Hard Rock. Hard Rock, when you think of Hard Rock Hotels, you think of Hard Rock. Reverb was created by the Hard Rock Group in order to provide a brand of hotel that's more suitable to a community like yours. No discos, as I said, no nightclubs. It's a more select, what we call select service. So we don't provide room service. We don't have laundry or dry cleaning service. We're kind of like a really cool Hilton Garden Inn. But Hard Rock is a hotel group. I mean, in the hotel industry, there's really three tiers to hotel ownership. There's the asset owner, which would be Catati Hotel LLC, and my family will own the hotel asset and keep it. Then you have the brand, or what we call the flag. That's Reverb by Hard Rock. Hard Rock has no financial interest in the hotel, nor will they. We have a franchise, we'll have a franchise agreement with them only. And then you have the management company. And most lenders these days require a management company. And our management company is based out of Providence, Rhode Island. They have a lot of experience in hotels of this size. But it's not, this is not the Hard Rock guys coming in and building a giant hotel in your neighborhood. This is my family building a hotel here, and we've chosen to call it Reverb by Hard Rock because it makes it easier to fill and keep full. So when this, when the RFP first came out on this property, I was intrigued for a number of reasons. One, because I was hoping to build something in the community that was in my backyard. And two, the idea of building something that was music-oriented is very interesting to me. I've spent a lot of time, I'm a huge music fan, have family members that have been in the music business for many, many years, back when I was young and one could say foolish. I used to produce concerts around here, lost money on every single one of them, got out of that and decided, well, maybe I should do it again. But I think the, spent a lot of time at the end of the beginning, of course, like everybody my age did who grew up here. So, but the idea, I think, of Reverb and Hard Rock is a very music-oriented brand. I'm really, really into music. I love it. I think Catati certainly has a reputation of music city. And I think what we're trying to produce here is a project that will be more than a hotel. I think it'll be a place that the people of Catati in this area can be proud of. It's a place where they can hang out. It's another stop on the, whatever they call it, the Catati Crawl. It's a, you know, we've got this beautiful plaza that'll be open for any kind of community events. So I guess I would close just by saying that we really want to be a part of this community, and I think we have something. We've spent a tremendous amount of time and a tremendous amount of money with the help of your great staff here to design what we think is the close-to-perfect fit for Catati. And I'd ask your support in helping us do that. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Mitch Connor. I am a principal with the architectural firm, Archologics, in Santa Rosa. So just to start, just a few opening comments. I'm going to kind of emcee this a little bit for the consultant team. I wanted to let you know who we have here tonight to answer questions and also give part of the presentation. We have BKF Greg Jennings, who's the civil consultant, Christine Talbot from Quadriga, the landscape architects. We have Grant from First Carbon. They are the environmental consultant. Did Colin show up? There he is. And then we have our traffic consultant, who's a subconsultant to First Carbon, here to answer any questions about any of the parking and traffic solutions that we're bringing Why I queued this particular image up? When Ken first came to Archologics to talk about, you know, submitting a response to the RFP, I think a big step for the team, and I think a big step for Ken, was to recognize the sort of development potential, and I think JB talked about this in the staff report in considerable detail. But the idea of marrying these two properties, I think, was an important sort of stroke for the team. And I also think it was an important step, you know, for Catati in tackling a significant project using the downtown specific plan guidelines. So as you can see in looking at this kind of diagram, if we hadn't have done that, then I think what you start to see is a more suburban response, which seemed out of character and out of alignment with the overriding downtown specific plan goals of creating a more urban or intense downtown by joining properties, joining buildings, using common area to... So this, and you've seen this image, and we'll talk quite a bit about it when I bring Christine up here to talk about some of the details of, you know, some of the site planning and landscape improvements and so forth. But this just created a whole different project. And we think that, you know, it's a nice combination of, you know, what the hotel does with its architecture, what the market hall did, you know, with this more agrarian look, which we, as our firm, has a lot of history with, working on projects like the Barlow and things like that. But we recognize that what the plan really was telling us, and this is through the help of, you know, town staff and Damian and Vicki when she was here, is that the downtown is a nice mix of buildings in general. They don't all have to look alike. In fact, it's probably preferred that they don't. But you start looking for certain kinds of connecting ideas that give them meaning to one another, and it creates a kind of a bigger mosaic for the downtown, you know, moving forward. I think the challenge for us as the team, and possibly even for the town or the city, is that this is the first significant project out of the gate. So, you know, we were, we had our training wheels on to some degree, trying to figure out how all of this was going to work, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's just sometimes we had to take a deep breath and say, all right, we're marching this way, and we don't want to be pulled that way, kind of thing. So, anyway, I'm going to come back up a little bit later to talk about the architecture and how it works, building off of some of the things that were in the staff report. I think right now I'll bring Christine up. She can start talking in more detail, more fine-grained, about how the site works and some of the other improvements that, you know, that we're bringing forward.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Christine Talbot from Quadriga Landscape Architecture. We're the landscape architects on the project. And as Mitch and JP mentioned, you know, one of the great components of this project is really this plaza that we're creating between these two buildings. And it's a wonderful amenity, not just for the people that are using the hotel and the market hall, but also the community at large. And the idea behind that plaza was really to create this kind of permeable space that could draw people in during business hours and connect to the city plaza that's already there. So it was a really important component of the site planning. Some of the other important components of the site planning, and then get into in a little more analysis, so I'm going to back off to a diagram. Circulation is always really critical to the site planning, and on this particular site, pedestrian circulation was really important. Creating this walkable, commercial, mixed-use area was really important to meet the goals of the downtown specific plan. And some of the circulation components that we've created are, I think JP mentioned, we're doing a wetland interpretive area here at this corner, and we're calling this line the urban trail. So that's really the pedestrian circulation that's open to the public all the time and connects those public amenities, like the city plaza that's here and the wetland interpretive area. This purple line indicates some of the pedestrian circulation throughout the site. We worked really hard to create places for people to walk through the parking lot that wouldn't put them in traffic. So that's what you're seeing here is walking through some of these bio-retention areas and then through to the entry to the hotel. Oops. I have a thumb that likes to... The yellow line indicates more private circulation that's open during business hours. So people are free to come and go in this plaza during business hours or when there's not a private event. So that's a little different hierarchy of pedestrian circulation. This other diagram indicates some of the open spaces that are being created on the site. Of course, we have the streetscape along, Gravenstein is already in, so we're just accentuating that. We're providing new streetscape along St. Joseph's Way with shade trees and low-impact design so that it'll pick up the stormwater off the street and infiltrate it. There's also parking along the street. We'll have more of an urban edge with raised planters at the building to create more of that pedestrian zone for people. That's very pleasant. The blue area that is shown in the parking lot, that's really more of a low-impact development within the parking lot. So all that area will be picking up the water off the pavement and filtering it through soil medium and planting, and then infiltrating into the ground. soil medium and planting and then infiltrating into the ground. And we'll have shade trees and different native plantings and low-water use plantings to create less of a paved parking lot experience and more of a planted experience. Along this 101 edge, we really wanted to pull some of that agrarian feel into the site and include a hedgerow. So we'll have very calmer trees in amongst the oaks and the redwoods that are there already, creating more of a hedgerow space for birds and beneficial insects and seasonal interest, and also just to help mitigate some of the noise and pollution from the road. This yellow area is an open space that's really adjacent to the hotel, so it's going to be a little more refined. There'll be areas for seating. There, we have a pool area that's for hotel guests. We have a secret garden area. And so it's really the public face and it's a little more, less native in planting feel and a little more refined. Sustainability was really important and an important component of the specific plan and also your goals as the town, as a city. And so we've met them in several different ways through the building energy. We're proposing some solar on the building itself here. The exterior lighting and the interior lighting will all meet California codes for energy efficiency and dark sky. We provide opportunities for alternative transportation, so there'll be a higher, there'll be energy efficient vehicle parking spaces closer to the building. And then we'll also be plumbing for future electric vehicles. And then, of course, all the low-impact development, which is, you know, helping with the stormwater and the water quality on site. I have to look at a bigger vision because there are a few other things that we've included that I want to mention. One is the bicycle parking. We will be providing temporary bicycle parking within the courtyards for people that are coming to use the space, and that'll be in the form of bike racks. And then the building itself will have some covered bike parking that's more secured for employees. We'll be planting trees, obviously, the solar I mentioned, supporting the parking policy measures for prioritized parking and the electric vehicle charging station plumbing. And let's see, the park and ride. I think that was mentioned, that we're keeping the 30 park and ride places here on this edge. So that will still be in play. Going in a little closer onto the hotel and market hall plans, specifically looking at some of these public spaces, again, this area here adjacent to the hotel is the pool and courtyard. So that would be for hotel guests. It would have a fence along the edge, so it would be secure. We'd also be proposing a wall along this edge, and that's really to provide some sound, I guess baffling, really, for the users. It would have, we are proposing to use an earthen block that has less concrete, so it's a sustainable material, and it's really beautiful. They used it at the Sonoma Academy. We would have vines on it, so it would be an amenity to the project, not just a sound wall. We'd also propose some columnar trees along this edge to really provide some, the sound of the leaves and just really to help provide a little separation from the road noise. This would be the entry from the back parking lot in this area, and you would see into these spaces through a permeable fence, so it wouldn't be completely screened. You would see little glimpses into what we're calling the secret garden over here and the pool area, so it wouldn't feel like you're walking through, you know, a canyon. It would be this really welcoming space. There's a vine-covered trellis in this area that connects to the plaza, so during business hours someone could, you know, walk back and forth between these spaces and enjoy a cup of coffee out on the courtyard. But the real public space is this plaza, and it's envisioned to host small music events, small parties, private parties, group gatherings. It's very flexible. This area would have a permeable paving and trees, so it would be shaded and, you know, be able to be used in hot days and also just spring days. We have permeable pavers throughout the plaza, spaces to sit down, have a cup of coffee or a drink or something to eat. And then access into the market would be through this area and this area here. During business hours, this rolling gate, it's about 18 feet wide, would be open, well open, so that people would feel welcome coming in and out. And we've incorporated the same paving pattern out into the street to really create kind of a red carpet into that space. This northern entry is, it's not as wide as the 18 feet, but it's still a very generous opening. It's an eight-foot wide rolling gate and it has an open mesh. I'm going to show you what it would look like. Something like this, so that you could see in but not be exposed. So it's a permeable, but there's still a little bit of privacy involved with it. And that would be this connection to the public plaza that exists. And it's highlighted by this water tower that's been proposed and also these picnic areas and some bike parking. So it's a really nice place to stop, just have a rest. You're not obligated to purchase anything, of course, and then you could go in, maybe grab a cup of coffee or something, something to drink, and be with your bike so it wouldn't walk away. We also have bike racks inside here, very secure, and also in this area. So there's lots of opportunities for bike parking. The main entry to the hotel is, of course, off the street, and it's a generous opening. And I think Mitch will talk more about how that building steps down to provide a little more human scale towards the street. And then we're proposing street trees here and a planted buffer at the edge. This is a little close-up of the interpretive area. We're anticipating a little decomposed granite area with some seating and some interpretive signage. This is a photo of something that you already have in town, obviously, and this is something that we've prepared for a project in San Pablo. So there's opportunities to incorporate not just information about the current watershed, but also about some of the, you know, the sustainable practices that are being shown on site. So we'd like to display that a little bit. The parking character, this is a kind of a different parking lot because, well, I think that you have something a little bit similar with Lowe's. So there'll be bio retention in the parking lot, and we've proposed a path through it. But you'll have these areas of taller shrubs and then lower grasses. We've proposed some seating and then, of course, shade trees, so it's not just a paved parking lot. At the Gravenstein highway edge, we've been working with city staff to create a more permeable edge here. Originally, we had more columnar trees just lining that whole street, and they asked us to open it up, put taller shade trees and have lower plantings at this edge just to block some of the car headlights. These are some character images of what the plaza, we envisioned the plaza to look like. Very large potted plants with fruit trees and edible garden, more wood and steel to kind of tie the two buildings together. Shade trees, obviously, with seasonal interest. This is what we envisioned, that DG area where there would be music held, so it'd be a very flexible space with movable furniture. And then the overhead lighting just to provide some ambience. Again, these are some of the screening character images that we looked. We really are interested in this mesh screen at the street edge to provide a little privacy but still show glimpses of the site. Again, this is going to be our wall along the western side and then the hedgerow along Streetscape character, it's going to be more urban pavement. There'll be permeable pavers and we'll have street trees with pavers from the parking area to the sidewalk. But in our project, we'll have low-impact development in this area of the sidewalk. And then the site planting character, you know, of course, we will be using, low-water using plants that are, you know, applicable to our area and to Sonoma County, Cattati in particular. And we're really taking cues from that agrarian feel, the more open feel with the hedgerows, plants that have a lot of seasonal interest and are a little less kempt, I guess, a little more wild looking in the parking areas. And then as we move towards the building, it'll be a little more tidy, a little more refined, but still a lot of texture and color. And of course, easy to maintain for Ken. And here, I'm going to pass it over to Mitch again to go through the architecture and the feel of the plazas.
So what I'd like to do is, you know, build off some of the comments or a lot of the comments that were in the staff report. It was fairly detailed and appreciate what JB did in explaining this. You know, again, I think one of the things that the downtown plan calls for, you know, is not only the diversity of buildings, but the diversity of open space. And I think what we try to accomplish here, and I think, you know, that we've done a pretty good job, is to have sort of a flex space like, you know, Christine was talking about. And it's also, you know, sort of a bridging idea between two different types of buildings. A more agrarian, you know, sort of a wood-clad building and something on the right, which is the market hall. And then on the left, you know, you obviously have the hotel, which is this sort of a little more of a contemporary rendition of kind of a mission revival kind of idea. The street is, you know, really important, you know, the public realm, let's call it that. I think that's maybe a better way to refer to it. And, you know, what we, you know, always try and create in these town centers and city centers, you know, is a sort of a, you know, a transition as you move from different scale, different texture, different landscape. You'll see lighting here in a minute. But, you know, when you think about, you know, the positive experience that you do have in a city, a lot of times, I mean, the buildings are important, but I also like to think at times that the buildings sort of recede and it's the sort of interactive public realm, open air kind of environment that really, you know, leaves, you know, lasting impression. And I think the way that Ken is, you know, kind of programming this space, you know, it's going to have a lot of different character during different times of the year. And, you know, and then the buildings, like I say, you'll see in a second when we look at some of the lighting, you know, sort of as a nice backdrop, you know, to that. Actually, to go back to the previous one, I'll come back to the St. Joe's image in a second. I think what's interesting about this site, you know, the way we kind of started to categorize it after a while, it's, you know, nowhere to run, nowhere to hide kind of thing. There's no kind of back aspect to the site, you know. I mean, you see it everywhere. You see it from the freeway, the off-ramp, you know, 116, Old Red, St. Joe's, you know, you see it coming from the town center. And I think, you know, it just became important that while the pedestrian experience is, you know, really important and it's a really strong theme, as it should be in your downtown as you're, you know, rethinking the way you use space, you know, in the city center. But let's face it, you are going to experience these buildings in a car. And it's important as you're sitting, you know, at these intersections that the architecture is interesting and it has different forms and this layering idea to the corner, using the sort of the one and a half to two-story market hall building and then having it sort of tier up to the four-story building, which when you look at it and planned is really almost dead center in the, you know, in the total site, which, you know, we thought was an important place to put that building. But I think you see this, you know, in this image, and then I think you see it again. This is 116 as you come under, you know, Highway 101 and sort of see the, sort of the long version of, you know, what the, you know, what the development's doing. And let's face it, if you have to look across a parking field, I think, you know, we've spent a considerable amount of time and energy making that, you know, as memorable as possible, both from an educational point of view with the interpretive, you know, wayfinding, but also just the way the landscaping works. And so what we really like about town centers and city centers is that the architecture sort of has the opportunity to sort of go out of character and transform itself in the evenings, and I like that a lot. I think, you know, I'm a big believer in urban, what I call urban lighting. I know when I was the planning commissioner in the town of Windsor, it was one of my sort of pet projects was to figure out how that works, and we're still working on it. But I think it's a huge opportunity to just, you know, to express a different kind of personality to development in general. And I think this project, you know, really, you know, offered up a significant opportunity to do that. So, you know, the buildings, you know, open up, you see what's going on. I think it's important that the community see activity, not just in the public realm, but in the buildings themselves. And so it's, you know, it's a real, you know, in fact, our lighting designer who couldn't be here tonight from Summit Engineers really did a nice job of sort of, you know, embellishing the architecture using these lighting ideas. Same thing with the public space, the plaza, you know, it's, you know, these catenary lights, you know, the way, you know, you kind of transition through this structure, you know, and that makes it very magical, you know, kind of is our little tagline here. It's very sort of theatric, which we like. And again, creates a different look and feel, you know, for St. Joseph's. And also from the, from the corner. So I'm going to open this up for questions unless Ken has any other comments at this point. Again, I just, you know, can't express strong enough the opportunity the city has to, you know, put a project together, putting to use a document that's 10 years old, but to do something at, you know, at this scale, I think, is unique. And, you know, certainly we've had a tremendous amount of support from Damian and his staff, you know, in making that work. So we're anxious to hear your comments and we're here for questions. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, the planning commission will ask questions of the staff, and then after that, we'll open it up to the public to ask, to give their input. So do I have anybody who wants to ask questions?
Okay, Ben.
Okay, sure. I've got a few. JP referred to the market hall as two-story. I'm curious, is there really a second floor or is we just refer to the height?
Excuse me, there is a mezzanine in the, inside the, in the building.
What's the difference between a mezzanine and a second floor?
I would say a mezzanine doesn't cover the entire first floor.
Okay.
That would be how I would describe it.
Okay, thanks. The 16 parking spaces on St. Joseph's Way, is that both sides or just the north side?
North side.
Okay. So this, so whatever development goes in on the south side would have the opportunity to create street parking there and counter against their parking needs?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thanks. Let's see. I assume that the lighting in the plaza, that lighting that's strung across the plaza, that the city and state requirements for downcast lighting apply to that?
Yes.
Okay. Seen a lot of bad downcast lighting where most of it goes up.
Yeah.
Thanks. Let's see. I think the others are mostly, well, okay, one question about the parking. There's a condition of approval to include signage and somehow indicate park and ride spaces are for commuters. But the parking study included those spaces in hotel usage, and I'm a little concerned that we're double counting those spaces. I'm wondering if you could address that at all. Or if the traffic engineer wants to address it.
Colin Regat with TJ Cam. The parking study included both the spaces and the demand, the estimated demand by those park and ride users. So, for example, there's a, there's a column in that parking study report on the last page that shows the number of vehicles that would be park and ride vehicles by time of day. So it's, so it's including the demand, including the spaces. Overnight on weekends is when there'd be no park and ride use, but there would be use by some hotel guests at that. by some hotel guests at that time.
So did it basically assume 30 park and ride cards, weekdays, eight to five, whatever?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. So a few questions for the applicant. How much solar? What uses are anticipated in the market hall? And do you have any potential occupants yet? And then one that's kind of for both of you is, is a question about protection for pedestrian access in the long run to the plaza. There's not a condition of approval for a public access easement for that. And, and I get it, that's a, that's a private space, but, but I think that pedestrian plaza is a huge asset and I wouldn't like to see a future owner say, no, we're going to shut that off and that's going to be purely private space. So I don't know who of you wants to address those. How much solar? What uses in the market hall and anything about pedestrian access in the long run?
I'll give it a shot. The, the solar is still part of the planning process overall for energy efficiency and environmental standards. I, it'd be impossible for me to say exactly what that might be. And as to the pedestrian, the plaza was designed to be a pedestrian space, a public space the vast majority of the time. We will occasionally be having events in there in which case it would be, it would be closed, but the vast majority of time and especially all day, that would be open. And there is great pedestrian access through there out into the existing plaza right now and out onto that pedestrian pathway that Christine pointed out.
And any thoughts about marketplace expected uses, potential leases?
About anything you could think of, we've probably thought of a few times.
Food stores?
There'd be some kind of, some kind of food and beverage operation in there. We'll have live music in there. I would say if I had to, to guess as we go along, I mean, I, I think we have something along the, the lines of the Redwood Cafe. I mean, we do see having a small stage. We do see having some local musicians in there. We will serve food and we will serve alcohol in there. We had talked before about the idea of having sort of quasi-food truck nights, you know, probably dinners at some point, Chapino Feeds, charity vets and the like.
Great, thanks. That's, that's it for me.
Okay. One of my questions was, it said 10 electric car things plumbed, but only two were required. I don't know if that's a question of staff. So why was there only two required?
Actually, there'll be a lot more plumbed than, than what's shown. They're also plumbing the, the west side of the parking lot. So all 30 of the park and ride spaces plus additional spaces over there will be plumbed as well. So the, the, Cal Green sets the standards largely for what you provide for EV facilities. And currently, Cal Green requires plumbing for a certain number of cars, but they don't actually require installation of the chargers. So that's something that you, you talk and you ask the applicants to do. But there's no requirement for them to do that, unlike the conduit and the raceways where they, where they are required to do that to, for a certain percentage. So in the discussions with the applicant, yeah, we, you know, we said we wanted at least some and they said we, they would do two, so.
Okay. Um, I think Ben pretty much had a lot of my questions. There was some mention early on about the ladder truck for the fire. Can you just address that so that everybody's clear on, on that? Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Correct.
Hey, my name's Andy Taylor. I'm the Fire Marshal for the Rancho Adobe Fire District. Currently, for the last several years, we've had auto aid agreements with the City of Petaluma with their 100-foot ladder truck. And Ronet Park has recently took delivery and putting in service a ladder truck of their own. Starting July, we're going to be increasing our staffing to 3-0 across all three stations. And the engineering requests that we've made of Mr. Malinato's group has, he's agreed to willingly. So there's got to be stairway access all the way to the roof with a protected stairway. And so we have no issues with this project.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Do you have any?
I have some minutia. On the ground floor, it says...
On the ground floor, it says "radio room." What's a radio room?
Good question. The Reverb brand calls for, it's not actually radio room, they call for something called Reverb Radio. It is a, it's a small meeting space, breakaway space that will have, um, equipment to do a podcast, although I have to confess, I have no idea what a podcast actually is. If I did, I could do one there. It's just, it's just a, a room with a musical name.
The next question is a room I don't recognize. R-O-D-I-E.
Roadie. You know, with, somebody forgot the A in there. So that's, that's another, um, another Reverb thing. So the roadie room is designed to be, it's a double-sized room and a little bigger. It has two sets of queen bunk beds in it and another queen bed, and it has two bathrooms and a big living area and a karaoke machine. When you say roadie room, what you're talking about is a room where all the roadies could go stay, except the roadies are all my age or older now and they don't really want to party all night. So we, we expect to use it for bridal parties and the like. I don't think we'll see many roadies in there partying all night.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I had one more, I forgot. So the stormwater pond, I love the, I love the bio, bioswales in the retention pond. But the, the claim that all that water's going to infiltrate, to anybody who's tried to infiltrate any water in Catatti is a bit of a stretch. And I'm just curious, when the next storm comes and those ponds are still full, because we're on top of a really thick clay layer here, where's the water go?
Sure. So Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The, the system there slows it and allows it to, to give time to percolate. However, in a, if you have a lot of successive storms or a large storm event, you're still, the priority still is not for the area to flood. So there's an overflow, which goes into the stormwater system and the Laguna.
Okay, thank you. So I've got a question about the, the redwood trees on the Highway 101 side. They, I'm assuming they still stay because they're outside the fence? And how does that impact the hedgerow and the watering there?
The redwood trees do stay, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to answer the, the second question, that which hedgerow, you mean the water, that's proposed?
Yes, the proposed hedgerow.
And how they affect the redwood trees?
Right. Will that be compatible with the redwood trees? Maybe I could ask the, the landscape architect.
Hi.
Thank you.
Yes, our intent is not to disturb the redwood trees. So once we start into construction documents, we'll be very careful and field verify where those trees, the hedgerow's going to go. And some supplemental water won't hurt redwoods. Definitely, might even help them.
Thank you. The second question, I had one about the EV stations, but that was asked by there, by Lisa. So the right turn lane out of St. Joseph's Way, that will be, there'll be a reformed road with some concrete to really, at the moment, it's just open, but it has a, a right turn sign. So will that be changed so that it's more definitive, like on the opposite side with Walgreens?
Yes, yes, exactly like what's on the opposite side of Walgreens. That's what you'll see is, at the terminus of the road, there'll be a median which channelizes the right, the outbound traffic from St. Joseph's Way, which channelizes it to the right. So, you know, basically, and it's signed saying right turn only. So there will be something in the street itself that, that channelizes the traffic to the right. And, you know, you can see it there, actually. Unfortunately, you can't see the right turn lane to, to the left there, but that is the picture of the median.
Thank you. Okay, and then the last question, the, on, on the Gravenstein Highway side, I think there is a fire access, isn't there there? Will that also be pedestrian porous so the pedestrians can move through that and across the parking lot?
Yes. Yeah, the, the emergency vehicle access only out onto Gravenstein Way is protected with removable bollards. So no vehicle access, but pedestrian access can fully go through there, unlike today, which is completely fenced all the way down towards the plaza.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So any more questions? So at this point, I'd like to open it up to public comment. We, it is great to see so many people here to have a look at the, what's, what this, this project. I'll start with the cards that I've received, but after that, I'll open it up for anybody else that wants to come through. So the first person is Teresa. So, and there will be a three-minute limit per person, thank you. And so we've got a bunch of, bunch of cards here. So the first person is Teresa Eaton. And what we'll do is we'll take input from everybody and we'll make some notes, and then at the end, we'll address them, the issues that are brought up by the staff and the applicant. Yes, right. Thank you. Hello.
My name's Teresa Eaton. I live in Catatti. I do not like this project at all. I think we need housing instead of a, a hotel. The hotels in Ronet Park, there's at least five hotels and at least five or six motels, so they not are, not always full. I don't know what there is in this town that would want to bring anybody into a hotel in Catatti. I'd rather see housing. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next person, Aaron Murphy. And after that, we'll have Brahandi Mokani.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Murphy. Live on West Catatti Avenue. I just wanted to thank everyone for bringing this project forth. I think it's a beautiful project for Catatti. I think with every project, there's always pros and cons, but I think with this project, it definitely has more pros than cons. I think with other cities continuing to grow, for example, Ronet Park with their proposed downtown area, Santa Rosa with their courtyard, as well as Sebastopol with the Barlow, I think it's important for Catatti to continue to grow and be relevant as a space for individuals to come and grow our economy. With that, I think the developers did a great job. The design is beautiful and timeless, and I think it'll be an enjoyable space for all residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brahandi Mokani, apologies if I haven't got that right.
Can you spell that?
M-L-K-A-N-N-A-Y. Hello. Two people. Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Brittany. This is Bo. We live on West Catatti Avenue. We just wanted to come today to show our support for the project. It's something that we're really excited about. We moved to Catatti for the walkability. We'd rather be here and enjoy our community here than go to other areas for entertainment or dining out. And so I think that this is a great project for what we're looking for in the community. We're incredibly grateful to be citizens here in Catatti, and we just want to show our support and say thank you for taking the time to develop a project that I think fits really well into the city. We certainly weren't looking for a look-or-feel that we have seen in areas like Ronet Park, so this seems to be a really great fit for Catatti, and we hope to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jenny Blaker. And then after that, Loriann Barber.
Jenny Blaker, Arthur Street, Catatti. I've been hearing about a potential hotel project for many, many years, and I know Catatti's been looking at hotel tax as an alternative sort of source of revenue. And I think this is a great location for a hotel because I don't see mixed-use or housing in that location. And if there's going to be a four-story building anywhere, I think that's the place to put it. I think the project sounds really positive in many ways. I like all the comments that have been made about sustainability, the landscaping, buyer retention, all of those kinds of things. I have some questions also about the uses of the market hall, and several times, it was mentioned it would be open during business hours, and I wondered exactly what that meant. I thought that the name of Plaza might get confused with La Plaza in downtown Catatti, and I wondered if maybe there should be a different name for it. I wondered about signage. One of the pictures up there had a very large sign on the side of the hotel, and I thought that looked rather ugly, actually, and I was wondering what the other signs will be like to direct people to the hotel. I also wondered about coloring. It looked a bit boring to me, like maybe there could be some more attractive colors on the building itself. I did read something in one of the documents about recycling and composting, which is great, but it was encouraging the use of compostable materials. And just today, I saw something in the Sonoma Guide to Recycling that explained that so-called biodegradable and compostable cups and plates and so on actually aren't and can't be put in the green bins. So I just wondered how that would be dealt with here. I think that's it. Thank you very much. It looks great overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Loriann Barber. And then afterwards, Bonnie Russell Lauren.
Hi, Loriann from Catatti. I also think that this is a potentially very good project for Catatti, so I'm generally in favor of it. I like that there would, it would bring in tax revenue for the city, and it seems like it would be hard to find something else that would be a good fit in that site. Some of the things I really like about it, I appreciate that there's some EV parking. I wish more of it was made live instead of just two of them. I like the water plan. I like reading in the packet that they would be using Sonoma Clean Power for their electricity. I think the plaza idea is really nice, and I think that people would, that city would, people would make use of it. It seems like a good amenity for the public. I like dark skies, so I'm glad that the lighting conforms to the ruling and is, is downlighting. Questions? I, I wonder if Catatti actually needs more retail space. I think there's a lot of empty retail space, and I wonder if having more could end up impacting negatively the current retail. So although I like the design of the marketplace, it looks, it seems like a nice addition, but I have some concerns about that. I think the fact that parking-wise, that you have to turn right to come out, even if you might want to go north, I would say that it would be a good time to look into Catatti getting rid of its dumb prohibition on roundabouts because it seems like having a roundabout there would be the perfect solution to getting people to going back north. And I think that might be all I have, so thank you.
Thank you for the comment. So the next person, Bonnie, Bonnie Russell Lauren. And then after that, Richard Sengas.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Russell Lorraine, and I moved here in 1983, so I consider myself old Catatti. I bought my house on West Catatti Avenue around 1993. So I feel that my house will be directly impacted by the hotel. Two of my major concerns are traffic because I know right now, people come up St. Joseph's Way and cut through the church and come down West Catatti whenever there is, whenever traffic is impacted. And so my nice quiet road ends up becoming a raceway. So that is, that is a major concern for me. My other major concern is the noise coming from the plaza for the entertainment events. One of the reasons I moved here is because I loved all the live music in the venues of Catatti. However, I work. I'm a kindergarten teacher. I have to get up very early in the morning. And I, from, when the Catatti Yacht Club was there, I would have to call the police on a regular basis because of the noise level. I would like to know more about... I would like to know more about what is going to happen with the noise level, what hours music is going to be allowed, and what can be done for the neighborhood, because I am the neighborhood of this hotel. What is going to be done for the neighbors in that area? So traffic and noise. The other thing I am concerned about is on park and ride. It's for, they said Monday through Friday, but there are workers who actually work during the weekend who will need park and ride. And having used that, that's something that's important to the locals. So I know Mr. Molinaro is from Sonoma County, but I also want him to remember that Catari has a unique personality. And the reason that many of us moved here is because of its unique personality and because of how neighborly everyone is. So I hope that the hotel plans to be neighborly to the people who have been here as long as we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard Sengas.
Hello, I'm Richard Sengas. I live on Ross Street here in Catari. A couple of things came to mind. I've been waiting for a long time for us to get a hotel in this town. As somebody who's sometimes been involved in planning events at Sonoma State through the past years, we've often found it difficult for people to get local hotel space, and we're sending all our tax money to Roanoke Park and Santa Rosa, so it would be good to have some of that stay local. We could call it, instead of a Plaza, a public square, and then that gets rid of some confusion there. I think that you're vastly underestimating the, the EV demands. Things are, are really rolling and changing quite quickly. Sonoma Clean Power's done a lot. Maybe you want to reach out to Sonoma Clean Power and see if they might want to go in with you on this, because they're really into getting chargers now, now that they've got lots of cars out there. I, I hear the issues about housing, and I think that having a hotel here is one of the ways to get affordable housing and other kinds of housing here, because that space isn't where people are going to want to live. It'll protect us a little bit from the highway, maybe even block some of the sound, and the income coming into the city might help us get somewhere for the, those other issues. One last little sort of minutia detail, I noticed the parking on St. Joseph's Way had these really nice growies along the edge. I love that. I like it when a sidewalk isn't directly on the curb. But that said, if you're trying to get out of a car, I've sometimes found on some of the streets where that stuff right on the edge, it's so close to the edge that the, the passenger getting out of the car has nowhere to go. So that just could be seen in there some along the way. And also, dark skies really matters. I think we need to keep working on that, too. Thank you very much. And I'm strongly in favor of the project as a whole, and tweaks great, but I think that the general conception is good.
Thank you. So we're out of cards, but is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? If they could step up and say their name and address for the record, that gives us the ability to get back to you, and it's to stay within three minutes.
My name is Joel Rosenblum. Me and my business partners, the Oliva, own a lot of the property between the physical therapy office and the gas station. I wish the Molinaros and their group a success. I originally came to talk about the left, the U-turn lane, that it was possibly going to affect one of my driveway curb cuts. Mr. O bid assuaged my worry and said there will be room to get traffic out of my apartment complex and retail complex to go south on Old Redwood Highway. But now I've kind of, well, I'm glad about that, but it seems like you might be just a little bit optimistic that one driveway out of this whole development, turning south on Old Redway to cut across in a hundred yards to come back north on Old Redwood with the traffic coming south on Commerce, coming off of 116 to turn south on Old Redwood Highway, seems like a accident waiting to happen? I hope I'm wrong, but that's really my only kind of worry about this. As long as my curb cuts are protected, I wish them all the luck in the world, as long as you guys think one driveway out of this complex with everyone directed south, half or more of the people having to turn north, seems possibly a bit optimistic. And I wish everyone a lot of luck.
Thank you. Yes?
My name is Rita Peralta. I live on West Catari, right across from the entrance of St. Joseph's Church. As one of the ladies already said, when people get out of church, they come right out that entrance on West Catari, and it's a lot of people, and usually we wait in our driveway till they leave. I'm not sure what's going to discourage the hotel people, the employees of the hotel, to not come the same way, come, come over the empty church parking lot and come out the same way. It seems to me that's just going to add a lot of traffic. I, I don't know where the discouragement is for them not to leave that way. And another thing, I, I, I like the hotel. I think it's a great idea. But the traffic, I'm, I don't think it's realistic. I, I agree with him. I don't think that's realistic, that the way they, they planned it. And the U-turn, I'm not quite sure I understand that. I'm not quite sure where is that U-turn supposed to be exactly? Halfway between Walgreens and Papa Murphy's? In the middle of that block, there's going to be a U-turn? Okay, well, lots of luck with that, because I don't think that's going to work. Anyway, thank you.
Anybody else that would like to?
Good evening, my name is Erin Armstrong, and I live on Lance Wood Court, and I'm the president of the Catari Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here to thank you very much for considering this Reverb Hotel in Catari. As Catari Chamber, we do do events in town, and we are called quite often by people who are attending our events, and not always our events, the accordion festival and whatnot, for places to stay. And unfortunately, we have to send them out of town. So basically, we're sending them out of town with big buckets of money to go spend in Roanoke Park, to go down to Petaluma, to go out to Sebastopol. We've got a big university that has a huge graduation that brings thousands of people into town, where they're all going to other places to stay. And we feel that this is a very good fit. I like that they've, that they've emphasized the music, because let's face it, that's what Catari's about. Nobody else has musical notes on their overpasses. We do. So I'm very impressed with the way Mr. Molinaro has gone about and done business and introduced himself to the community. We like the plans. We think it's aesthetically pleasing to Catari, and we hope that you will approve it, because we need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for the public comment? So if there's nobody else, one more call, I will close public comment. We do also have letters that we've received from people, so we are taking those into account beforehand. But I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion.
What did you call? A lady named Bonnie. Could you, I don't understand where you live. I can't envision it.
I'm at St. Joseph's Church.
Yeah?
I am directly from St. Joseph's Church.
So, so your concern is about people cutting through?
What happens is people come through St. Joseph's Way, they cut through the church, and then they turn left on West Catari Avenue. So they are not supposed to be cutting through the church, but that is, has become the pathways. When traffic is bad, that's the natural pathway that people take when they come down West Catari.
Could that be addressed, do you think, by enforcement?
Well, I've looked there for twenty years and that hasn't happened.
So I'll just add to this discussion.
Yeah, if I could bring it back. Sorry, I should have really opened it up and asked for staff to, right, no, it was my mistake. I should ask for staff to respond to all the questions that the public raised. So if the staff would like to go over the list of questions.
I can't address the, at the end of St. Joseph's Way now, where currently it's a, it's a continuous street, so yes, it encourages this cut-through traffic. We looked at that. We can't, we don't want to cut off St. Joseph's access to St. Joseph's Way. We can't do that. But the end of St. Joseph's Way before it turns left and goes along the highway towards the church will be redesigned into a driveway apron. So it will give a strong appearance that you are leaving a roadway and now entering onto someone's private property. St. Joe's can do what they want to do with that access, if they want to control that access or not, it's up to them. But at least we're going to change the roadway configuration, so it does discourage that cut-through traffic, as well as still allow the people out on Sundays, though, to come down St. Joseph's Way.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just also add that, as JP said, when you leave a public roadway and you enter private property, you're conditioned, you're accustomed to going on a concrete driveway apron, and so that's how the end of the road would be reconfigured, so you're going into like, almost like a commercial driveway at the end of the road. And in addition to the physical reconfiguration, would also be signage saying, hey, this isn't a public roadway. And those are the changes that are proposed to discourage that type of cut-through traffic at this point.
Is that concurrent? Is that concurrent with this project?
It, it's installed by the project. It would be installed as part of the project.
So if I could go through the other questions?
She also had a question about the noise and when that, when the hours would be. Right now, the, the, the packet is that the all noise, amplified outdoor noise, anything would, would end at 10:00 PM. So anything after 10:00 PM, if they wanted to do that, they would have to come to us, request a limited-term permit, which would require notification and a public hearing to, to go beyond those hours.
So any other questions that were the public were asking? The, I, I guess the U-turn, will that be a, will that have a concrete apron in the middle where that is visibly enforced?
Concrete medium?
A concrete medium?
There's a schematic at the moment. I mean, there would have to be some sort of sign indicating the U-turn, but I, how that would be implemented, I don't know. At this point, it would be subject to a design. I mean, it could be, you know, there's many different solutions from, you know, bumps in the road, you know, to protect the area, to maybe a small island right there, just to protect the sign, but that's yet to be determined. It obviously depends on the driveways that are around it, because we don't want to include anyone's driveway access, and put it in the, in optimal location so it doesn't cause any issues with turn movements. But just stepping back, I will say that one of the existing, you know, one of the things that we were trying to improve on was sometimes people come out, especially, well, they'll come out and they might try to make a left-hand turn across all those, you know, those three lanes of traffic right there. And we're trying to just improve the safety of that, so therefore, when they get to the end of St. Joseph's, they would be channelized to the right with a sign saying right turn only. So they would go to the right. If you're heading northbound or going towards like 116, for example, like northbound 101 or 116, you're heading back that direction, then there, there was two ways to approach it. Either they could go down, you know, down Old Redwood Highway to one of the streets and turn around and then come back. But that sends a car through those intersections multiple times, turning around and coming back. So to try to, to try to improve on that situation, the thinking there is that you could do a mid-block opportunity for a U-turn, kind of like, you know, much like you see in many signals now where there's like flashing permissive left arrows, where they can make turns, you know, when there's brakes in traffic. So it would be something like that, but without a signal arm. And in terms of traffic volume from the hotel, it's, it's pretty low. And hopefully I'm getting this right, when I was talking to the traffic engineer a while ago, he seemed like the Walgreens turn in, that left turn from the center turn lane, for example, has more traffic turning left than you'd see from the hotel.
Good, thank you. So I think the other questions that came up were just general more comments about, does Catari need more retail space? I think that's up to the applicant to really decide.
One other one about signage. I assume the signs that are shown in the plans conform to the city's, what's, what's permitted under the city's sign ordinance? Or they will, anyway?
Yeah, they, well, they do. There's only, there's two signs that are proposed. One was on the front of the building facing St. Joseph's Way, another one is a hanging sign on, on, projecting sign that said Reverb on the side of, coming off one of the corners off of, also kind of near the St. Joseph's Way. They conform to the standard.
So no sign facing the, the Highway 116 side?
I don't recall seeing that, but I'll take a double, couple look.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion.
Do you have any questions or any comments?
I think we don't want to open up the public comment again, so it's really a discussion. I think it's a discussion on the Planning Commission of what we think of the project. Do you want to lead away or?
I'll start. I like the project. I, I like that it's going to be more sustainable and more, basically can kind of be like more Catari, I shouldn't say, I don't know how you really say that, but more of our, our vibe in, in town. I do have some issues, though, about just the two EV stations going in. I would like to have at least six of those. That would be my preference. I think it's only going to be more and more, you're going to have electric vehicles and people using those. And I think two is just really at the very minimum of, of what they should put in. I mean, for me, I would like to have, you know, 20, but I think six is a good start. You know, I, I do have some concerns about the St. Joe's cut-through, and even though there's an apron going through, and I think that's still, for me, going to be an issue. I would like to have had more of a conversation with St. Joseph's Church and to see if they had a solution, if they wanted to do something where we could put even some bollards in and, and chain it off and have it only for when the church is using it. I think that would be a good solution for the neighbors out there. You know, that was my first thing is, you know, I've gone to St. Joe, you just cut through. So I'd like to explore that a little bit more with the applicant, if we can maybe have some conversation with St. Joe's about that for the neighborhood that's going to be impacted the most. Other than that, you know, I just think it's a good project. I would like, if there is retail that goes in, I would like to be very mindful of what we do have in Catari right now and not impact a lot of the retail that we already have here. Something different that would only complement what we, we have downtown, so we're not competing with our existing. So those are my comments for the project.
Thank you. Anybody else want to?
I also think it's a very appropriate project for the site. I can't imagine a better use for that site, right up against Highway 101 and the exit ramp. So I, I think it's definitely what we want to see there. I think it establishes a good pattern for the development of the downtown-specific plan heading south from there. I'm encouraged that that's a, a good starter, starter block for the, for the proceeding southward, especially with that, the Plaza, or whatever we end up calling it, establishing a northern end of what I hope will be a, a more substantial pedestrian way that works its way down the DSP. The, nobody's mentioned jobs. I, I think that a hotel provides a pretty substantial number of jobs, and I'm encouraged about those jobs coming to town. The, so the cut-through from St., through the church is an issue for me as well. I'm, I'm hopeful that the, that the driveway apron would mitigate it. I think for hotel guests, it, it would. For regulars, probably not. They'd get to know that way through. And so I would be open, and, and I, I might ask the applicant after we talked about it a little bit, whether the applicant would be open to a discussion of, a conversation with the church about this project paying for a, for a gate there, that, that the church would then be able to open when it needed. But I also need to know that emergency vehicle access is okay through there, even if there was a gate. Let's see. The noise from, from entertainment, this, so in the long run, there will be hopefully substantial buildings in between this site and any existing home, current homes. In, in the short run, sound can travel pretty well against, along a big In the short run, sound can travel pretty well against, along a big, flat, open space, so the city has noise ordinances that address that issue with caps on noise levels at the property line, and I expect this, the city has had to deal with that a couple of times and has procedures down for dealing with that, and I trust would continue with that. I'm, one nitpicky thing, I'm not a big fan of the design of the water tower, it doesn't echo our local water towers very well, and since it's non-functional, I'm just not a big fan of kind of pretend things like that that don't even look like what they're supposed to represent in the area, so not a fan of the design of it. I wouldn't mind one that actually did mimic our local square water towers, but that's, I'm certainly not going to raise a big stink about that. That's it.
Thank you. Steve, any?
I'm in favor of the project, I'm impressed with the staff and the report that they gave us. I think as far as the EV, I think we're 18, 20 months at least until this is actually appearing, and I think this will come back to us on different things, so we can address the number of EV ports and such. And the design of the water tower, I think would be another idea that we could address later.
Thank you. So I also had some concerns about the EV mix, if you like, and I'm pretty impressed that there's a lot of basic conduits going in, and I think that's the big issue in the beginning, is just really to have the conduits on the ground so that it's easy to pull the cables, should decide to, should the owner really decide that they wanted more EV stations in there. I like the way that the buildings are staggered and that the buildings have some character, there's inset on the facades, that's very good. I like the wetlands walk, that's a beginning there, and hopefully that would continue round, because there is a wetlands education center that can occur later on. Again, I like that idea that there's an internal pedestrian pathway that could be encouraged in the future or move across the whole of that section, should anybody else decide to do anything in there, that it's setting a, more of an extended area for Catati, that there's, the plans have been in place for some time. I'm okay with the block length variance that's been talked about, I think that's okay, it's pretty small, and I like the sound of the, or I like the sound wall and the way that's being put together with an earthen structure and then covering it with vegetation. So overall, I think it's a well-thought-out project, I think it's, it'll do very nicely for that end of Catati. So I would, I would call for a motion.
Can I follow up with one other thing?
Okay.
On the EV, the EV capacity, speaking from personal experience, that conduit is a huge part of the expense of putting in more chargers, but another big piece is transformer capacity, and I wonder if the Cal Green requirements include current inclusion of enough transformer capacity to handle the future installation of chargers? Do you have any idea, or is it just the conduit raceways that they're mandated?
I don't know, I'll have to look at that, went deeper.
And then, kind of a related question?
Definitely valid.
Yeah, Commissioner O'Nines brought up coming back with some details, so this preliminary design review, since Design Review Commission doesn't, Committee doesn't exist anymore, will we see this again?
No, you will not see it again. It will go to Design Review Administration, which is largely staff and design professionals outside of the commission, that will, that will look at the tower. And I can recommend a condition of approval that the applicant shall work with Saint Joseph's Church to mitigate cut-through traffic, including potential signage and/or installation of a gate. If that's satisfactory, if you want to tweak that, we can include that to address those concerns. And then if you wanted to ask the applicant if they'd be willing to install additional EV chargers, we can increase that number as well. Because there is a condition that they do install the two, we can adjust that, if we have willingness.
Shall I open it up to the applicant, Austin?
I don't, I don't think we can put a condition of what the statute is, can we? I don't think so.
I don't know, but we can ask.
Because there are some variances required, I think we can, that's essentially a negotiation, and so the two charges that are in there are beyond what the statute requires already, and that's already a condition of approval. So, yeah, I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant.
On both of those, yeah, I would be too.
Yes, would the applicant like to step forward, and we're asking, we're arresting you more now.
Love to. We're also, I mean, you know, I grew up around here, as you know, I have a strong environmental bent. We want to do everything that we can do to protect and preserve this area and this world for the next generations. What I would propose is, is that we start with two, with the understanding that we see, you know, what the demand is for those, if the demand is greater and we need more EV stations, then we'd be happy to do so. We're just, we just don't have any idea. Two was recommended as a number that would be a good starting point.
Okay, thank you. And then the second question, would you be willing to work with Saint Joseph's Church for possibly paying for a gateway or some other traffic calming measure?
Absolutely, and I did want to address that, if it's okay. The, I think the issue coming out onto West Catati Avenue, if I understand it correctly and from what I've seen, is after mass, and so you have, I understand from the past, you might have as many as 1,000 people in there for mass, and mass gets over at the same time and everybody runs to their cars to get out. Other than when we were having some kind of an event, I mean, we would never have any kind of mass of traffic trying to go through Saint Joseph's at any time, mostly people checking out of the hotel. If they're guests from out of town, they're not going to have the slightest idea where that road and that concrete apron may lead to. One of the things that we've spoken about with staff on a number of occasions is, if we do have an event that had any considerable number of folks, then we'd be willing to work with the police department in order to provide some kind of traffic control, and then we would, we would keep that traffic to the greatest degree possible out of the Saint Joseph's area. One other thing, noise, we're also very cognizant of the noise, we think that the 10 o'clock cutoff for music makes a lot of sense. We'll also, we're more than happy to live within the noise ordinances that Catati has. An old friend of mine runs the concerts at Somo, and when I've been over there with him, I mean, he spends all of his night out there with his sound meter checking decibels, we do the same.
Thank you very much. Do we feel this is sufficient? Or does anybody have a feeling of wanting to have it written?
Well, I think the condition that JP proposed about working with Saint Joseph's Church is appropriate, and I think the applicant just agreed to that, so I would like to include that condition.
Would you just repeat that again?
Applicants shall work with Saint Joseph's Church to mitigate cut-through traffic, including potential signage and/or installation of a gate.
Thank you, does that?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, I do too.
And I'm okay with, I just want, on their radar, that two EV stations is really the minimum. I mean, the world is changing, people are putting in stations in their house all the time, so it's only going to be more of an impact, so.
And I'd like to echo one of our commenters, that if you contact Sonoma Clean Power, they may very well pay for your eight additional chargers at buildout.
Thank you, so the next stages that we want to go through here is?
So now you would, you're looking for a motion, and?
For each resolution separately, we have two resolutions.
We have two resolutions, one resolution is on page, excuse me, one second, is on page 86 of your packet, this is the first resolution that you must make.
2019-3.
Hold on.
And the second resolution is?
Yeah, we want to make, you want to make the resolution on page 86 first, that is the one approving the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring reporting program. After you've made that resolution, if it successfully passes, then you would make the resolution for design review variances and use permits, which is on page 97.
And that would be the one with the added?
And that would be the one that we're going to add to Saint Joe's?
And that would be the one where I will add it in the Saint Joe's condition, correct.
Does anybody want to move to?
I don't want to read all that. Sir, I'll move. I move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring reporting program for the Catati Hotel and Market Hall project located at 147 Saint Joseph Way, and making the required findings pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
Could we have a vote, please?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Very good, thank you very much. And the second resolution, which we have 2019-4, shall I move that we vote on the resolution of the City Council, City of Catati Planning Commission approving preliminary design review for the Catati Hotel and Market Hall, consisting of a hotel with 153 guestrooms, a 7,250-square-foot commercial building, and a 10,300-square-foot outdoor pedestrian plaza, and variances required to implement the project, together with a use permit for the hotel, alcohol sales with entertainment, the nightclub, and outdoor dining on private property, with three APN numbers that are listed, plus the one that JP just brought up with Saint Joe's, working with Saint Joe's. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Can I have a roll call?
Commissioner O'Nines?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Chair Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Well, congratulations to the applicant. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for coming along and listening to that, and we'll now move on to the next part of the business. So if we, if we could, excuse me, could I ask everybody to move out? We're still in session. Hello? Could I ask?
You can take a break.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
You're never going to get everybody.
Okay, I'd like to restart the Planning Commission, and can we have reports by staff? By the way, good job, I think that worked out very nicely done.
Thank you, yeah. As far as reports, I don't have a whole lot to report on since our last meeting. I could tell you that the interviews have completed, at least this round for the director position, decision still to be made on that position, and you'll know soon as we do. City staff right now and Community Development Department, we're looking to, looking at some grant monies that came out that we're going to be going for, you might see, well, you may not see it, but it'll go to council, a request to make application for SB2 grant that we can use for housing. So with that monies, we'd like to do an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Currently, we're operating under state rules, our ordinance was made null and void in 2017, yeah, 2017, when they, when they passed new rules. So we'll have a current one that's designed for Catati. And also we may?
Thank you, Craig.
And we also might be looking at what's called Cottage Housing Ordinance, it's kind of like a PUD, and it allows for smaller units with common space, almost like Frog's Song, but not quite, but it moves in that direction, and it's a new opportunity, and there's interest from a developer that had walked away from one project because they couldn't make it pencil, but thought they could make this type of project work. And I think it's very Catati-appropriate. Assisted Living in Catati Village over on Highway 116 and Alder, those projects are now, we're just, pretty much, they're complete projects, and we're finishing up the environmental documents on those. One of them is going to require a 30-day circulation, that's the Assisted Living project. The other one is an addendum to the EIR that went with Catati Commons. That addendum doesn't require a circulation. I don't yet know the timing on when the commission might see those, but those are going to be some of the next big projects that you have, we have coming up. And I think that's about all I have to report on today.
Thank you. Any reports by commission?
I have one, that I've decided that eight years on the Planning Commission is long enough, and my position is currently advertised on the city website, so the council will appoint somebody new probably before we meet again, so.
Sorry to hear you go, Ben.
Well, thank you, it's been, I've really enjoyed it, and I just needed to pare back my commitments, so.
I'd like to say thank you as well.
Yeah, it's wonderful working with you. I just had one thing, the Karikasov property, seems like there's a lot of activity going on. Do you, in that blank book, JP, do you know who I'm talking about? On East Catati Avenue, Kristina Karikasov's property right there.
Oh, I know its property, but I don't know what activity it might be.
Well, the house is, seems to be being dismantled, so I, as I drove.
Excuse me, sorry to interject, but it's under the building department. It was tagged, red-tagged, because they were doing work without permits. It has since been, had plans come in on it, they are remodeling, redoing the whole inside, plans have been approved, and a permit has issued on that.
Great.
So it is, it is now in compliance.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah, I've been driving by and I just, it seemed like there was a lot of activity going on, and I didn't really see, you know, it just usually comes under our radar a little bit of what's going on, so, thank you, appreciate that.
I'm going to be away, I guess, my only news is for, until July the 10th, so I guess there'll be a basic minimum of the Catati Planning Commission. Oh, okay, so I guess that's why we had this evening, to really try and wrap it all up, but our vice chair will be coming back from New Zealand, hopefully.
Yeah, the end of May, Suzanne will be back.
Right, so.
Then you won't have a really a planning commission, so.
Okay, well, I'd like to bring this Planning Commission to close at 9:15, and thank you to staff for making it go so well, all around, and for the water and the thoughts up here and the cards.